Because this is such a critical issue. Every year, I go to as many graduations as I can. And some of the most compelling graduations are those of the adult education programs. And it is a sight to behold to see someone who is an adult, somebody who has family, has children, graduating from the eighth grade or from high school. Because they know that by furthering their education, they will be able to improve their lot in life and bring their entire family along with them. That is why I did this resolution, and that is why I think we need to talk about what is at stake here. Now, over the last several years, the Los Angeles Unified School District has seen substantial decreases in state funding, and these decreases are likely to continue to occur. Now, because of these decreases, LAUSD is considering closing adult community schools, affecting more than 255,000 adult education students, including people who have dropped out of high school and are trying to earn their general education diplomas or their GEDs, and students taking English as a second language. Now, the adult education provides courses and citizenship, the GED, occupational programs, basic education, parenting, credit recovery. That's just a sample of some of the things that this adult education can do. According to a 2003 report by the Workforce Literacy Project, Los Angeles has the highest rate of people who are adults who are undereducated, more than any other United States major metropolitan area. Low literacy rates reached 65% on the east side of our city and 84% in south Los Angeles. So, I say to you today, we can't afford to lose a program that so many rely on. It will be detrimental not only to those students, but their families, and will impact our entire city. And if we really want to give people a chance to pull themselves along and pull themselves into the middle class, adult education can break the cycle of poverty for people and their families. It's an investment in people and their families. It's also important to note that successful adult education programs are often associated with reductions in overall public spending on health care, on public assistance, and incarceration. Research has shown that better educated people participate in greater numbers in our civic life, they rely less on social services, and have better employment opportunities and increased income. So, I hope all of us can join together to save adult education. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
If you would allow a number of people putting cards, if you would allow perhaps one or two of the folks to speak on behalf of the group, and they can decide if that would be...
What we'll do is, Ms. Perry, we did hear this, and we had a great discussion in committee, and we were able to pass this out without a hitch. I believe that that's what will occur now. But because I remember some of the faces that I see out there, and their stories were compelling, I'd like for whoever is the quarterback of this group to come up with five people that could speak on this subject, and then we'll take it from there. I'm going to ask Mr. LaBange to take the chair for a few minutes.
If we could, all those five speakers, we'll have one minute each, so we get everybody that opportunity, and speak your heart. Please address with your name first.
Okay, my name is Lila Bose. I want to thank all the city council members for allowing us the opportunity to speak with you. I want to give a special thanks to council members Ed Reyes, Jan Perry, Urb Wesson, Tom LaBange, and Jose Weezer for allowing us the students to speak about our concerns with your representatives. We come before our elected officials to ask of your support to pass a resolution. We need to demonstrate to the LA Unified School District that they need to reconsider their position to adult education. Too many lives and dreams are on the line to make a drastic decision like that. We tend to point the finger at different levels of state legislature for being the ones causing the huge deficit. But we all have to take the responsibility to change that. As responsible citizens and interested parties, we need to question where our taxpaying money is going and be more involved in decision-making. It would be detrimental to get rid of adult education. We need educated individuals to help better our society, not destroy it. More than 300,000 students depend on adult education to be a better asset to their families, their lives, their workplace, their community, and society as a whole.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Give her a hand for that good speech right there.
Mr. Vice President, members of the council, thanks very much for allowing us to speak to the resolution. Last year, this year, there were over 300,000 students in adult education getting job training, language acquisition, basic skills to help them move into meaningful employment. We're now going to have thousands of returning veterans coming back to Los Angeles that need to repurpose their very high skill set back into a civilian economy. The school board's response to this is to cut the adult ed program, to defund it, to have nothing next year. This is not a time to be cutting job training programs in this city. They're passing the buck to us, they're telling us, "Go talk to the legislature." Legislature passed the law, signed by the government, which passed authority and responsibility down to the school board. They need to step up, take responsibility for what they've been tasked for, they asked for this job, they need to step up there and take care of it. And where is the mayor on this issue? It's disingenuous for him to maintain, he doesn't want to get involved in school board politics. He funded their elections, he's over there all the time, he needs to quit being silent. We need the mayor of this city to stand up, together with the city council, stand up for Los Angeles, and help us all move forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please identify yourself.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing us to come in. My name is Mary Ann Reyes. I am a student. I attend Wilson Lincoln Adult School in Lincoln Heights. I just want to say real quick my story, and just from the students. We're struggling to stay alive. I got laid off, I had no other chances, so adult school was the only option for me. I ended up in adult school, and it actually helped out with my depression, because three years ago, I got hit by a vehicle, and I didn't think I was going to be able to walk again. But here I am. And not just my story, but so many others, parents trying to teach their children, the violence. We got to understand that if we close adult ed, violence will go up tremendously. So, please, keep in consideration, and please, just keep us in your mind. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mary Ann. Next speaker, please.
Hi, good morning. My name is Rodrigo Lopez. I'm representing these beautiful people out here, and the reason why I'm here speaking against you, with you guys, is I'm part of the 3% of the dropouts here in Los Angeles, and I was born and raised in Los Angeles. And now, I'm part of different clubs at this facility, Evans Adult School. I'm part of student council, I'm the secretary there. I'm also in part of the shared decision committee. I'm also the Students United, providing the information on what's going on in these type of meetings, and taking them back to the schools. I want to go ahead and tell you guys that I'm going to go ahead and graduate finally, and I should have graduated in 2004, but I had the second opportunity to go back to adult school, and thanks to that facility, I'm going to graduate in June 14th and walk that stage. So, thank you, guys.
Good job. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Next speaker.
How you doing? My name is Sergeon, speaking behalf of East LAOC, Occupational Center over on Marengo. I want to let you guys know, you guys are wonderful people, you guys everyone's making the decisions for us, but I want to let you know, I'm in there. This school has brought me up. I'm not only branching out now, I'm networking with all the students that helped me start beginning my business. I've gotten straight A's, I have all my certificates, I'm finishing in June because they're closing on the school. So, I had to finish school in three months, I had to complete in three months, which really takes two years. And not only that, I had to take my schoolmates with me, because we can't move alone, we don't do things alone, we only do it in groups with people. We're as strong as our weakest link. So, we made a group, and we moved forward, we held pep rallies, just to extend time so that we can finish school. So, just let you know, thank you for the rush. I'm finishing school June 22nd, but I'm hoping, because there's a lot of students that haven't finished, that didn't know what to do to accomplish what they needed to. Give them a chance, you know, support us. You guys are wonderful people, that's why you're in that chair. You know, it's motivated me, I've never been here before, and I grew up in LA. I've never been here, and it's wonderful to be here, so please, consider us. Thanks.
Thank you very much. The final speaker.
Okay, my name is Renato Lira. Yeah, I would like to send a message to Richard Alacon, Tony Carreras, in order that North Valley is almost to close down. So, I'm asking everyone to support us on this, to send us a message to the LA district that we can do it, we can continue to save adult education. It's time to get off on the political, get busy, and save adult education. It's really important for us. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. The last speaker.
I'd just like to thank the city council and individual council members, Alacón, Garcetti, Weezer, Ed Reyes, and Jan Perry, and others who have been great supporters and leaders in their community in supporting those people who need adult ed. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We're going to have some speakers here to call on right now, Mr. Garcetti. Before Mr. Garcetti, I want to give a shout out to Evans Adult School, where my Anna Núñez, one of my great employees, goes there. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you to all our teachers and our students who are here today. You know, in January, when folks came and talked to me about this, and I've had probably five or six meetings with teachers since, I've only two times in 10 years gone to the school board meeting to testify, and last time I went, it was to make sure that they save adult education. And I went there for this reason. Folks keep saying that LAUSD has to concentrate, when they have no funding, on the core mission, so they can cut adult ed or early ed and/or arts ed out. In this economy, the reason we don't have enough money for our schools is because we don't have enough people working. And the way we get them working again is by making sure that we have adult ed. So, if we cut adult ed, we go further down the rabbit hole of a declining economy, and we have less money, and we have to cut more. If we save adult ed, people go back to work, we get a better economy, and we'll have money for our schools. So, don't do something that seems cheap in the short term, because it's going to be very expensive in the long term. And thank you for bringing up the veterans. I have, you know, fellow servicemen who I know who are coming back from Afghanistan right now, struggling to find jobs. We just had Memorial Day yesterday, and talking to many of them. This is the social safety net. Whether it's the seniors who I came with at Glassell Park, where we have, and you know, I was just asked by a reporter, what has the city done to step up on adult ed? We got a free place built for $1, so that LAUSD didn't have to pay for facilities in Glassell Park, where we have seniors who are learning critical life skills, who are keeping their minds alert, who are being able to do things like dance, and stay healthy, and extend their lives. So, we've done our part, and we will continue to do our part. LAUSD needs to do its part and save adult ed. We stand with you, and thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Alacón.
Council members, I stand in support of the resolution, clearly, and I've had the opportunity to express my concerns to the school board early on. The bottom line is that the adult education program is an incredible asset to our community of providing opportunities for people to upgrade their current positions, but also to finish their high school education. One of the things that people think when you talk about adult ed is that these people are in their 30s, 40s years old, but in fact, 88,000 of the students in the adult ed program are currently enrolled in the K-12 system at public school. And these are people who just want to finish their high school diploma. If we cut adult ed, I want to make it clear, one of the things that school board members are saying is we don't, we had to make a choice between the K-12 system and the adult ed system, but the fact is that 88,000 of the people that use adult education credits use them to graduate from the K-12 system. So, it's disingenuous to sell the cuts as a choice between little kids and a choice between adults. It's not. It's about our graduation rates. We have miserable graduation rates at LAUSD. This will have a direct impact on our graduation rates, it will increase our dropout rate, and I don't know how that's good for Los Angeles. Now, everybody recognizes we have a revenue problem. We have it here at the city, we have it at the school district. But we should be working on positive solutions, not negative solutions, where we're just throwing people out to fend for themselves in the worst economy that this nation has seen in most of our lifetime. So, I'm a strong supporter of adult education. I do have the Pacoima Skills Center and the North Valley Occupational Center, including many adult education programs at some of the high schools in my district. This is penny wise and pound foolish, as was said. We should not be cutting adult education. We need our adults to educate our kids. And those parents who are in this program, to do just that, will not have the opportunities to be able to teach their kids. One of the critical problems we have in the city of Los Angeles is we have a tremendous immigrant population that is trying to work with their kids on their homework. If they cannot speak English, if they cannot use computers, how are they going to educate their kids? How are they going to work with their kids on their homework? I have many, many, if not thousands, certainly hundreds of people that are using the adult ed program so that they can be better parent, better prepared to be parents in the United States of America, so their kids will be successful where they've had major challenges. So, this is a bad proposal. I wish we could do something more, and I would certainly support it, but we need to send at least a strong message to LA Unified, that this is not good for the city of Los Angeles, it's not good for LA Unified.
Thank you, Mr. Alacón. Home of the West Valley Occupation Center, Mr. Dennis Zine.
Oh, thank you. And I was at the West Valley Occupation Center just last week, speaking to the vice principal, said they plan to close that at the end of June. Another location where people learn a trade, and it is imperative that we keep those facilities open. People don't want to go to high school, people don't want to go to middle school, they don't want to go to elementary school, and they got truancy laws. I've never heard of a truancy law where people go to adult education. They go there because they want to go there. They go there because they want to get that education. They go to the trade schools, whether it's West Valley Occupational Center or any of the other institutions, because they want to learn and get a trade, and earn a paycheck, and support themselves or families, and be part of the system. That's what they go to school for. So, I find it ironic that the district wants to shut them down, wants to displace the students and the teachers, and I don't know what the district is trying to accomplish, because those are the folks that really need the education, that want to be there, that want to pursue so they can better their lives. So, I join in this resolution. It's important that we support this. It's important the district finds ways to help adult education and help the occupational centers. Because if you go to the West Valley Occupation Center, or the one in Mr. Alacón's district, some of the others that they have around, these teach people trades, so they can go out and get a decent job and earn a decent living. And it's ironic that they're attacking those schools where the adults go. We don't have a truancy problem with you folks. We've never had a truancy problem with adult education. Yet, the district wants to cut that and displace all these people who are teachers and students. And it's a sad commentary on our educational system in the LA Unified School District that wants to torture, torture those that want to learn and get into an occupation. So, I totally, completely support you, and I hope that our resolution helps somewhat. We don't have the resources to fund it, it's not within our jurisdiction, but you have our vote, you have our support, and if we need to rally with you, we'll be more than happy to do that. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Mr. Carreras.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to Councilmember Perry for bringing this important motion forward. I have strongly been in support of trying to save adult education. I've written letters and called the school board, I've put articles in my own newsletter, and there are a couple reasons why. One, which Ms. Perry mentioned earlier, when I was in the State Assembly, we researched why we had so many people in jail and why we had such a high recidivism rate. And the most obvious pattern was a high level of illiteracy and undereducation in our jails. The way to break this pattern is partly through adult education. The way to keep it going is to eliminate adult education, which is a terrible idea. Also, if you look at the future of our city economically, there have been studies that show that our jobs are going to require greater and greater skills, and our population is becoming more and more unskilled and undereducated. The one way to have a chance to change this is through adult education. The absolute wrong thing to do for the future of the city of Los Angeles is to eliminate the adult education program. So, I think we have to send a message to the school board, don't do it. I know you have a lot of bad choices, but this is the worst one. Don't cut adult education.
Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I want to thank you for coming out to keeping on the pressure, keeping on the rallies that need to happen to get your voices heard at the school district. I, you know, there's so many things that the adult ed centers do and the community centers, and I want to focus on one demographic. You know, we are a city that is over 40% foreign-born. Many of those people come to this city with not completing the high school education. They come here as laborers, really. But when they look around and they do their jobs, and they want to better themselves, they look at our adult ed centers to learn English, to get computer skills, to get some other skills that would allow them to continue the social mobility that this country has promised them. And the adult ed centers make that possible for many, many people. Just a couple of days ago, I was cleaning out my office from some of the boxes I had when I served as a president of the school district. And in that box, I found a picture of two graduates who had sent me the picture when I met them at Evans. And the picture was very interesting, because I took a liking and a friendship to these two individuals. You see, this was a son and father who were graduating the same day from Evans, and it showed that what a school like adult ed can do, when the father is even going back to learning after he saw that his son had put in the time. The son had gone back to get some additional skills, and the father never completed elementary school in Mexico where he came from. And it was just a beautiful thing to see, and it reminded me of the important work that adult ed does. So, keep up the fight, you're doing a good fight, not only for yourselves, but for a few generations of Algeelinos, like everyone said here, it's not the smart thing or the right thing to do at this time.
Thank you very much to all my colleagues, and I was moved to introduce this resolution because of what I've seen and how adult education can change. And I, as I said, gone to every graduation that I can go to for the last 11 years, and it will bring tears to your eyes to see a grown person making that transition, finally get an eighth grade education or that GED, because you know they're going to take their entire family with them. And I'm really amazed at the turnout today. One of the teachers just told me that they'll be taking two weeks off without pay to help this program survive. That's true commitment and true devotion and true leadership, and so I'm pretty confident my colleagues are going to join me in supporting this today, so that we can do what we mean, mean what we say, and give everybody a chance to get out there and have a better life. Thank you.
For those of you that came to committee, could you raise your hand? You remember, I told you it was going to be like this. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President, and I want to thank Councilmember Perry for asking me to second this motion. When you look at the impact, it's obvious who gets hit the hardest. It's the working poor, it's the people who still have a sense of spirit and hope that something could change, that this country has that ability to inspire one for someone, for something better, and that's what you fight for. At the graduations I've been to, especially at Evans Adult School, I try to go almost every year. And the last one I went to, we had it inside the campus, and in one of the buildings, there's flags of every country, flags of every country hanging on the ceiling. And you can see how the teachers had dedicated their lives to teach these hardworking folks who, I remember, there was a time when they would get there at 5:00, 6:00 in the morning just to learn English, so they can get to work by 8:00 a.m., leave work and come back and finish their classes, just so they can get that certificate, just so they can learn that math, or be able to communicate in English, and with a great sense of pride as Americans in coming, going, and coming to this country and going through that transition. You know, colleagues, this is a time where, when we look at the great universities we have in this, in this region, the USC's, the UCLA's, the Claremont's, the Occidentals, there's so many schools who want to figure out how to penetrate and look at our population so that we can have a greater and much more educated labor force. Well, here's a great opportunity. Why not work with these universities? Why not look at task forces that does basic, and something our city's been trying to do for the past few years? Look at their facilities. Why cannot a major university near adult school invest on that plant? So, perhaps they have private money coming in while they are addressing the educational needs of that population, and in the same process, they're creating a pool of candidates for their university, whether it's to finish their BA or their masters, and create these not only tracks in education, but physical plans that are connected to each other, so you can create revenue with this public-private partnership. We need to think creatively, creativity in this process. I know we're trying to assess and understand our resource base with our assets in this city. We don't have the skill sets yet to put together these contracts that allow us for private-public partnerships, but that principle, that concept could extend to education. If we look at Evans Adult School, it's on Grand and Sunset, or Caesar Chavez, depending where it begins and ends. But that is a prime real estate. If we can look at public-private partnerships, where a private entity that wants to deal in biomedical field or other sciences, and use that plant to be near their population, they can do that. So, with that, I just want to say to you, you have mindful support, I think the council's going to support you unanimously. We are in a position to say to you, don't give up, we're behind you, and we have to figure a way to make this better for everyone. Thank you so much for your sacrifices.
Mr. Carreras.
Thank you very much. I'm going to vote for this resolution, and one thing I want to thank, the author, Ms. Perry. I want to thank you very much for including the paragraph that reads, "Whereas LAUSD officials have stated that they have cut $2 billion in the last three years, and yet, adult education has survived those $2 billion cuts." So, I think we owe a thank you to the school board and the board members who have figured out a way through $2 billion in cuts, still keeping adult ed alive. But at the same time, they're looking forward, as it says here, and currently have 560 million deficit, with another 500 million looming next year. The thing is, ladies and gentlemen, that is all coming down from the state of California is not funding school districts throughout the state of California, including LAUSD, anywhere near at the level that they're even mandated by law, by Proposition 40. In addition to that, they're not even funding it beyond that, and they haven't done that in the last 12 years, pretty much. So, my point is, yes, the LAUSD has tough decisions to make when you're looming 500-plus million dollars two years straight in deficits, and in addition to that, it's up to the community colleges to step in and rightfully take their place as well, and try to figure out how they can use their state dollars to try to work with our local school districts like LAUSD. Perhaps with their state dollars, they can come to our LAUSD campuses and couple that together and actually continue to have adult education. And some people I see are shaking their heads, but as a former budget chairman of the state of California myself, as we have several former legislators here, the bottom line is, the state of California is cutting back on many local government fundings, and the fact, those are facts, they're in writing. If anybody goes online and reads the budget or what have you, you're going to see that they're cutting drastically, and I hope and pray that LAUSD figures out a way to save adult education. Yet, at the same time, they still have over 650,000 young people between the ages of 5 and 18, they have to educate as well. So, let's just hope and pray that they figure out a way, like they have in the last years, to salvage adult education, and hope they continue to do that. Mr. President? Mr. President, don't I still have the floor?
Yes.
What's the decor, Minister?
Okay, guys, when you guys spoke, everybody was quiet, gave you respect, you will do the same thing.
So, let's hope, let's hope that LAUSD figures out a way to continue to save adult education. In addition to that, let's also remind our legislators, our governor, and also our community colleges that they have a responsibility too. Thank you very much.
Mr. Kocorian.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I stand in strong support of this resolution. I want to thank Councilmember Perry for bringing it forward. Few things could be more important to our community right now than preserving and Few things could be more important to our community right now than preserving adult education. A number of years ago, I served on the Burbank School Board. And the proudest moments that I had when I was on that board was handing out diplomas to the graduates of our adult school and hearing the life-changing stories about the experiences that people had gone through and how different their future was going to be because of that adult school. And I was inspired, when I went on to the legislature, to introduce legislation that would broaden the availability of adult education throughout California, through distance learning, through the use of technology. And as a result, I was the Adult Education Legislator of the Year in 2008. So this is something that I'm very, very passionate about, and I think that it's critically important. This cut would be devastating to the hardest-working students in LAUSD, the most motivated students in LAUSD, the hardest-working faculty in LAUSD, the people who are choosing to change their lives through adult education. So it would be a terrible, terrible mistake to make this cut. But I do want to say also that this is, it's a symptom of a broader problem. And that is, as a society, we are not making the commitment that we need to make to public education. When I was growing up here in Los Angeles, we had the finest schools in America. People came to California to study what we were doing right. It was, we were the envy of the rest of the country, our public education system. Now, you know, 30, 40 years later, we're last in class size, we're last in librarian-to-student ratio, we're last in nurse-to-student ratio. We are at the bottom in per pupil spending. And it's atrocious and it's disgraceful and we should be embarrassed as a society that we're not making a greater commitment to public education. Instead, we're outsourcing it, we're privatizing it, we're, you know, coming up with silly ideas like handing out vouchers that will bankrupt public education and, you know, take and devastate what has made this country different than other countries throughout the world. And that is a free and outstanding public education that should be available to every young person and every adult who chooses it throughout this country. And we failed in that commitment, we're continuing to fail in that commitment. Mr. Cardenas is right, that as a society, we have to press our legislature to make a new commitment to public education. And we, as a society, have to stand up and do it too. We have to be, yes, demand reforms, but we also have to be willing to pay the price to educate people in this state, because that's the best investment of money that we can make in our state's future. And we're not making it now, we need to make it. And in the meantime, we need to make sure that these opportunities for adult education remain available. Thank you.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Those from the Venice Emerson School, raise your hand so I can see you here. Thank you for coming from over there to this event. Look, folks, we have our priorities wrong. We should not be investing in prisons and the war on drugs and building more prisons and prison guards than we do schools. We should be focusing on health care, education, and infrastructure. We should get out of these foreign wars that make no sense, take those monies and reinvest in ourselves. Adult education is key when you're a society that we are, where we need to learn English, we need to get skills, we need to get ourselves focused. That's what our priorities should be. But why do we do this war on drugs? We throw people in prison for smoking pot. I'm not saying go smoke pot, but we don't put the alcoholics or the drug, prescription drugs, but yet, we have 2.3 million people in prison in the United States of America, more than any other place on earth. In fact, Communist China, which has 1.3 billion people, has less people in prison. So we put kids in prison for smoking pot, okay? I toured the prisons and I've seen these young men and they're 17, 18, 19 years old. We spent $70 billion on incarceration. We spend $40,000 a year to keep that kid in prison. Wouldn't it be better to spend that $40,000 on education, health care, and infrastructure? We have to change our priorities as a nation, instead of wringing our hands. We're losing our middle class, we're becoming the 99%, and then the 1% has everything. So stay strong, stay focused. Thank you for being here this morning, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Rosendahl, there, per the screen here, there's an applause tie between you and Mr. Kokorian. With that said, Mr. Buscagno.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Rosendahl, tell us how you truly feel on this issue. Ms. Perry, thank you so much for bringing this forward and introducing this motion. You know, when I look at each and every one of you here in council chambers, I think about my family, my aunts and uncles, my parents who immigrated here from Italy and really reaped the benefits of adult school when they first landed here in San Pedro. I, I've met with numerous students from the Harbor Community Adult School, and we actually had staff march with them in, to address this issue and this cut with LA Unified School District. And just to paint a picture, to send a message to the school board, if adult schools cut, my district will see a loss in ESL classes, will see a loss in citizenship classes, will see a loss in family literacy programs, will see a loss in personal interest classes, extending far beyond my district, from San Pedro Narbon High School, Banning High School, Wilmington Senior Center, even the Boys and Girls Club of LA Harbor, which are hosting some of these classes. This is definitely gonna take a hit in my district and my adult learners as well. So I stand to support this resolution along with my colleagues, because not only, I've been a part of the LA Unified School District family, my wife's a teacher with LA Unified, and my two sisters are teachers with LA Unified. And I know the importance of balancing K-12 education with adult education. You know, I look here at the horseshoe and I know we have the support from our former legislators up from Sacramento, you know, looking at Mr. Kokorian, Mr. Corretts. And we may even be sending my colleague here, Mr. Alarcon, to Sacramento as well. So we know how important this issue is. Thank you for being here and lending your voice and your passion, your commitment to adult education, which I stand to in favor of this and moving forward. Thank you.
I didn't press my button. Did you want me to speak, Mr. President?
No, if you didn't press your button, then we can, I think we can give the people what they came here in hopes, what they would receive. And I do want to say that it was, it was a pleasure. Well, first, let me thank Ms. Perry. I think this is a wonderful idea, something we should do. I want to thank all of you again. It was a pleasure to meet you in my committee and Mr., it was a moving experience from Mr. Laban and myself, and we let you know early on where we were. So let's see if I'm a good gauge of the members of this council. I think it's time to vote on this issue. Why don't we open the roll? Close the roll? Tabulate to vote.
15 ayes.
Mr. Laban just saying forthwith. All right, now, come on now, don't disrupt, we still have work to do. No, now, come on, guys. Let her, I know you're excited. And she jumps up and says, sorry. Okay, we're gonna now move, and again, congratulations. This was your work. This was you organizing, making phone calls, having a lot of the teachers and professors show up. This shows the power that the people do have. So on a personal note, congratulations to each and every one of you. Now, item 20, Madam Clerk.